I'd like to call to order the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for March 27, 2024. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Lestracca.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
So, I think most people are here for a very special evening, which is recognition of five outstanding women in our community. And I would like to start with asking former Commissioner Deb Zimmerman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance because it was her great idea that started all this. We don't start meetings off very often with bouquets of flowers with us, so for those of you who may be not regular attendees, this is a little unique for us and we're very excited about it. But, we do have a couple of housekeeping items that we have to meander our way through, so if you could hold off for five minutes before we get to the exciting part, we have a couple of things we have to do. First is, I need to announce that, and I can see my counselor staring at me, I need to announce that we met before the meeting to discuss personnel and real estate then. Moving on, is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Andrus. Any questions or comments about the agenda before you? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of moving ahead with that agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Consent items, is there a motion to move the consent items into the record?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestracca.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Partha. Those items include the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting minutes of February 28, the Treasurers' report for the month of March, the bills payable, paid bills in the amount of $183,644.94, and unpaid bills in the amount of $1,321,140.82. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of moving those into the record, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, those are approved. Okay, citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments on agenda items? All right, see, that wasn't so painful. We got through that pretty quickly. We're gonna go right into our Women's History Month, recognizing five outstanding women in the Hatfield community. So, let me start off before I introduce each of the commissioners, who are then going to introduce the person who's recognized from their ward. Again, I want to thank Deb Zimmerman for four great years as a commissioner with us, but also because, you know, she brought this opportunity, this idea, to us. And it's a thrill to continue to do it. And so, she deserves a round of applause. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, I'm gonna ask if Jen would lead us with our Ward One recognition. Yep.
Beline, would you be, I'd be honored if you could come join me. Thank you. This is Normie Beline, from Ward One, Hatfield Township. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about her. In the fall of 2022, the nation was just beginning to emerge from COVID-19. Families were anxious to return to normal activities, oh, normal activities, but still suffered some post-traumatic stress from the experience of the pandemic. That was the scene when Normie Beline took over leadership of the Home and School Association at AM Colpe Elementary, where her daughter Aria is a third grader, and Aria's in the crowd. Thank you for coming. Running a home and school association could be considered a source of stress in itself, but Ms. Lane knew she was on the right track when it came time for her first big event, a movie night for students and their families in January 2023. And my son and I were there as well. It was pure chaos, she laughs. She was running around like crazy, ordering pizza, making sure the popcorn machine was working, scrambling for volunteers, but it all came together at the end. For Normie B, the best part was watching and listening to the students as they came in the front door. Ooh, it smells like a theater in here. I can smell the popcorn. Their eyes lit up, and they were so excited. It was the first event coming out of COVID. And it made me, and it made her feel great that we were able to pull it off. Now, in your, in your third year as Home and School President, Normie B will tell you that things always, don't always run as smoothly as the first, as that first event. Parents have different personalities and different opinions about almost everything. I just, and Normie B just tries really hard to mediate and find a happy medium. Agreeing on what's best for the students is the best way to resolve differences. I agree. A great example of her consensus-building leadership style was last year's sixth grade graduation. It was the school's first graduation coming out of the pandemic, and AM Colpe Principal Dr. Sarah Radigan wanted to make the event extra special. She asked the Home and School Association if it would contribute towards caps and gowns that sixth graders could wear for their ceremony. Most parents seemed to support the idea, but some preferred that their child be able to express their individual style for the event. The home and school eventually voted to wear the caps and gowns, but Ms. Lane went a couple steps further to build consensus. Students were going to be the ones wearing the caps and gowns, so she surveyed the sixth graders about their preference, and about 85% wanted to wear them. She was, she also surveyed sixth grade parents, and again, received about 85% support. Finally, she spoke to the sixth grade teachers, who pointed out that caps and gowns would put all students on an equal footing when it came to dress for graduation. We covered all bases, bases, but in the end, we made our decision based on what students wanted, she said. Ms. Lane moved to Hatfield six years ago and loves the town and the school district. The people here are lovely, she says, and it's a great place to raise children. She also has two fur babies and loves that there are, that there are dog parks and open spaces for them to play in. And also, Ms. Lane says, we've had really great experiences here, so we just wanna, I just wanna thank you for your leadership and making, it's interesting, my son and you started at the same time in your leadership role, and he has a student, so I just wanna thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Ward Two. Commissioner Bob Rogers.
Evening. This is for Lynn Norman. I got to meet the Normans probably some 30 years ago or something like that, way, way back. So this is a good opportunity. Lynn is the wife of John Norman, who was a commissioner for over 20 years at Hatfield Township. And the one thing you learn very quickly when you're a commissioner's wife, I believe, is that you listen to everything in the stores. Your husband did this, good, bad, ugly, everywhere you go. Back then, Hatfield was much smaller, and everybody knew everybody, so I'm sure you had to put up with a lot of hours of that, so that's pretty impressive. So anyway, what I have here is the original team mom. If you had kids who played sports, you know that a successful team needs three things: committed players, a dedicated coach, and a team mom who holds it all together. The team mom is the liaison between the coach and the parents. She communicates to all the families, oh, excuse me, come on up, I'm sorry. Anyway, the team mom is the glue that holds the sports together and helps the experience fund for everybody, makes the experience fun for everybody. Lynn Norman just may have been the original team mom. Not long after she and her husband John moved out to Hatfield from the Mount Arriez section of Philadelphia in 1975, John was asked to coach their son's baseball team. It's unclear whether team mom was an official designation at that point, but it certainly would be by the time Lynn's Little League days were over, because she helped to define that role. She saw the potential of the Hatfield Little League, and you know, Hatfield Little League really played a big part in Hatfield. And I think it still does in a lot of ways, but back then, that's a pretty big, pretty big deal. She saw the potential of the Hatfield Little League to benefit from the snack stand, and she recruited other parents to help run it. She saw kids walking home by themselves after games, and she organized rides to make sure they got home safe. She solidified, she solicited donations from parents and used some of the snack stand revenue to fund scholarships so that families with more than one child in Little League could afford to have all their kids play. That's pretty important. In between all that, she managed to support her own family, watch her own kids play as John coached. Little League, Little League was a great way to meet new people and get involved in the community, she says. We love doing it. Thanks in part to all the community connections the Normans made through Little League baseball, John was encouraged to run for Township Commissioner in 1981. Just like a Little League team, every political campaign needs a team mom, too. And Lynn was just the person for the job. She remembers being John's driver during the spring of 1981, when she would go door-to-door on the weekends, visiting every residence in Ward Two to introduce herself and ask for their role, for their vote. She remembers the good advice they received from an incumbent commissioner, who was also an amateur photographer. He suggested taking a family photo to use for his campaign mailer. And our kids thought it was the coolest thing, Lynn says. They said, you're giving that out to everybody? So, it's the one up there in the corner. So, I think they did have color back in those days, too. So, the successful campaign launched a career of services on the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners that would last for more than 20 years for John Norman, and was a catalyst for Lynn's next voluntary position as a Ward Two committee person, responsible for the smooth operations of the polling places on Election Day. She mostly responded to voters' needs, everything from explaining ballot initiatives to answering questions, how do I do a write-in vote, to what time the polls close. So, this is one of the things that, I think several years later, I kind of took over this responsibility, and there was quite a, it wasn't an easy task. I think a lot of the committee people just, sometimes they show up, sometimes they don't, but they said, hey, you buying pizza for us? The Normans always bought us pizza. So, but that made me think. And so, you know, I tried my best to carry on this tradition. So, looking at all the ways Lynn was involved in Hatfield community, it's easy to assume that she was a stay-at-home mom, but you would be incorrect. All these roles, wife, mother, team mom, campaign manager, committee woman, had been embraced while managing a 30-year career at Inter Systems, formerly Honeywell, in Horsham. That dedication and commitment is born out of Lynn's love for her family and the town in which they live in. We truly love this community, and it's, and it's hardworking people. She says Hatfield Township helped shape our family's life, and we always have great memories. So, it's pretty incredible. You know, the other thing is, when you're a commissioner's wife, you give up a lot of time, Tom says this all the time. The commissioner gets a lot of the glory, but the significant other is at home doing all the work that they're not getting done. And I think back in the 80s and 90s, Hatfield Township was a pretty busy place, with a lot of growing and stuff like that, a lot of changes. So, I'm sure she, she had a lot of extra responsibility she had to pick up on. And I think that's one of the reasons why I think that I chose to pick her, to celebrate all that she's done for Hatfield Township and the community, so.
I promise. I would like to thank you in front of everybody. That was very nice. I appreciate it. And thank you to my husband. Who really wanted, he wanted to move here as much as I did. And the rest is history. And thank you to the community leaders, past and present, residents, township staff, for creating a community to raise our family. Thank you. I'm honored. Thank you all.
All right. Ward Three, Commissioner Partha.
Thank you, everyone. For the Ward Three, I want to call Melanie. Please come in here. So, thank you. I want to thank Deb first for taking the initiative to recognize an outstanding woman in the Hatfield community. Thank you, Deb. So, for Ward Three, Melanie Holinski, I'm spelling correct, maybe? Okay. So, yeah. Some people just gravitate towards the community service. It doesn't matter where they are, what stage of life they find themselves, or any other circumstance, they will find ways to involve in making their community in a better places. They certainly describe our Melanie Holinski. Whether she is working as a child life specialist at the Children of Hospital of Philadelphia, which is CHOP, being a mom of her two middle, early school kids, or a neighbor to her fellow Castle Heights homeowner, Melanie is always and always involved in the community. As a professional, Melanie provides a valuable service to children and their families. In her position at CHOP, she addresses the psychological concern that accompanies stressful and traumatic events in a healthcare setting. The advocacy and support she provides is child and family-focused, and is communicated in a way that child will understand. Now, after 20 years of experience, Melanie is working for the CHOP ambulatory practices and staff to equip them with the tools and knowledge necessary to work with children of all abilities and background. As a neighbor, Melanie has helped maintain a longstanding tradition in the Castle Heights neighborhood. The holiday luminary display, almost every one of 135 homes in the neighborhood participate, an extraordinary level of buy-in. She and a neighbor lead the effort, which range from purchasing and organizing supplies to working with street captains who then distribute to individual households. Every year, we say, are we doing this again? And yes. And every year, we do it again, and it's magical. Melanie's most impactful service for both her family and the community has been her work as an involved mother. When her kids were in the elementary school, she took advantage of all the volunteer opportunities she could, like organizing and championing their sixth grade trips. And the end of the year's event, for example, a service worthy recognition for, and it's all by itself. She also supported all their sports and extracurricular activities. As they got older, her focus was shifted according to their involvements. She recently volunteered at her son's jazz band competition hosted at Penfield Middle School. She also volunteered at her daughter's dance studio show. And recently organized and raised funds for a trip her son's baseball team will make to Cooperstown, New York this summer. Melanie's most significant involvement, however, may be her efforts to make her community a safer place. When her kids began attending Penfield, which is our middle school, the school district designed it, and other Castle Heights students as workers, meaning they had to walk, they had to walk the 1.8, almost two mile, to school with their luggage, salads, backpack, and other gear. Melanie first lobbied to get them on a bus route, but when that didn't succeed, she turned her attention to making the work safer for the students in the neighborhood. Her persistence results in the crosswalk of the Penfield being painted along the Eloy and Fairguns Road, and pedestrian crossing sign belonging being placed at intersection. And top of that, my, I have a younger brother who is in eighth grade, and he also sometimes works and uses that, and thanks the family for that. And it's really safe for our kids who work, and that is a significant task. She continues to advocate the lower speed limit and blinking lights along the walking road. The kids use those crosswalks, she says, before they were painted. Kids didn't know where to cross. And when you are coming to uphill, up the hill on the Fairguns Road, you really see the crosswalk and sign. It was a huge relief that we at least did something to alert our drivers. Melanie appreciates to being able to raise her family in the Hatfield. For example, she feels safe allowing them to walk on or ride their bikes to one of their favorite summer destination, Mom's Water Ice, and which is back right now, so somebody's coming up. But it goes beyond that. I love that Melanie says, I love that my kids are not growing up in a bubble. Hatfield is a very down-to-earth, and you have all types of people from lots of different places and backgrounds. I like that our kids are exposed to all works of the life. It's been a wonderful experience. Thank you, Melanie. Thanks for your all effort. I'd request, Melanie, if you want to say something?
A little bit. I just want to say thank you. Deb, thank you so much for organizing this. I don't think there are enough opportunities for other women to support women, and I think that that, you know, goes a long way, and I'm just so thankful for this type of event. And Jay, thank you for dealing with my very detailed and neurotic brain, and Erin for partnering with, with us to get that safer route to school. I started to get more involved in the community a few years back, and it just felt so supported by everybody. So, we've only been here about seven years, but we're not planning on going anywhere. So I look forward to more experiences living here and, and meeting more people. So, thank you.
All right. Ward Four recipient. I feel bad for her because I spent a fair amount of time up at this podium, so, and I have a lot to, wonderful things to say, wonderful things to say. Teri Peck, I need to start off right away. Yes, absolutely. I need to start off by seeing a couple of personal comments, and then I will kind of go into the historical background of the interview that was, that we received as a part of the process. But first, let me begin by saying, Teri, and she knows this, is one of my favorite people of all time. There's never a time that, when you see each other, when we bump into each other and we talk, I don't feel better for having had, I always feel better for having the conversation. And sometimes, it's something, because I learned something, because she is just a remarkable wealth of knowledge and just such a wonderful person. And she does so many things for our community that really is in very much an unsung hero-type scenario, and I'm about to tell you about those. But, if for no other reason than to just kind of, you know, when you get a good visceral reaction from people when somebody gets nominated, I want to tell this quick story. The process for nominations is by ward, as you can tell, and so, when I got the email that said, send in your nominee's name, and I quickly sent over Teri's, the staff's response was, "Yes!" with exclamation points. And so I thought, yeah, I chose the right person. This was an easy choice. So, and it's not just because she's done wonderful things, but also because anyone who has met her knows that she really is truly a wonderful person. Now, I'm gonna tease her a little bit, though, because the write-up that Jay did, which is excellent, which is a part of the interview process that he does so wonderfully, as I started to read through it, I said, yep, this is Teri, because it start off with a little history lesson. Mostly about St. Vincent de Paul, but there are two, I mean, there's many things she does in the community, but there's two significant items that she does, events that she takes care of. She runs the St. Vincent de Paul Society. Those of you who are familiar with St. Maria Goretty Parish, that's not far from here. It's one of the longest-tenured and most successful charity organizations that the church has. And in addition to that, the other thing that I often, you know, recognize her for, and when I think of voting, I think of Teri, she's the judge of elections in Ward Four. And so, anyone who has ever volunteered at one of these locations understands that this is probably one of the most unsung events or heroes in that room that you can imagine, especially in today's day and age. That is not an easy scenario. The people who vote, vote and leave. The people who are annoyed, come talk to Teri. That means she has a very long day, in addition to long days in advance of that, preparing and then juggling the interests and concerns of others. That day alone warrants an award, I can assure you. But she does so much more. So let me tell you a little bit about St. Vincent de Paul and her contributions to it. So here's the history lesson that I learned. "In the early years of the 19th century, a group of Catholic university students in Paris met regularly to discuss the plight of the poor in the city. One day, a visitor to that group issued them a challenge. What else do you do besides talk?", he wanted to know. Well, the weight of that question drove the students to action, and in 1833, they founded a group called the Conference of Charity. Members would visit the homes of the poor to determine their needs, which included basic necessities: food, shelter, clothing, firewood. But extended, but it also extended education, medicine, and other services. Their charity was based on the example of St. Vincent de Paul, who's the namesake for the charitable organization, a French priest who realized God had called him to work with the poor. Eventually, the Conference of Charity rebranded itself as St. Vincent de Paul Society, which today has 800,000 members, which I did not know.
In 153 countries.
Oh, in 153 countries. Okay. 800,000 members worldwide, including 100,000 in the United States, divided into 4,000 conferences, giving leadership into 4,000 conferences, giving leadership to 40-plus conferences in the five-county Philadelphia region and Hatfield, Hatfield resident Teri Peck, who's the local conference is based in St. Maria Goretty. I am a St. Maria Goretty parishioner, if you haven't figured that out by now, and so I'm very pleased to have her represent our church as well. So the challenge issued by the visitor to that group in Paris nearly 200 years ago still resonates with her. When asked, what do you do besides talk to prove that the faith you say that you have is important to you, her response, one of the things St. Vincent taught us is that the poor suffer more from a lack of organization than they do from a lack of charity. Nearly everyone is willing to help if they trust the process, and they only trust the process if it's organized, which means the people who run it need to be organized in order to attract the people to contribute, not only their time and their treasure, but also their good wishes. At St. Maria Goretty and other conferences, the process is to indeed organize. When someone calls the church for help, a member of the, of the society team calls the person back to make contact. More often than not, two members of the group will arrange to visit a person or a family member. And Teri has said, we've mostly gathered additional information so we can determine if, if and how we can help. It's significant that they do not call these contacts clients, but they call them neighbors. So once the visit is complete, the group meets weekly to pray for those who come in contact with and discern how best to help. The conference does not make loans or direct gifts, but often their help takes the form of helping a neighbor find financial or other resources. Sometimes, Teri has said that they hold the hand of a neighbor while they pursue the help that they need to make themselves sustainable. So, you know, I, I'm very familiar with St. Vincent de Paul. I'm very familiar with the annual walk that she runs. My family and I have done that over the years. And each time I think of the organization and its charge, I think of those moments when she and others sit at a kitchen table of someone who is struggling financially and helps them figure out what the resources are that are necessary for them, not to just fix what's going on at that moment, but over a long period of time. And then to continue that relationship, it is quite, it really is quite a giving moment that just continues on and on. Teri has said, we try not to put Band-Aids on things. If there's a shipwreck, the first thing you do is throw them a life preserver, but that doesn't get them to dry land. What do we, what we do is throw them a life preserver and then figure out how to help them get to dry land. That's a really important distinction. So in addition to overseeing the process for her local conference and other conferences in the region, Teri also helps the, the group with fundraising. She and her local team participate in the National St. Vincent de Paul fundraisers, such as the Annual Walk for the Poor, which I just mentioned, which has raised some 25, 27 million, million dollars over, over 15 years, but also adds to the, to their own local spin. St. Maria Goretty's team has had a member who excels at creating raffle baskets, so much that a recent concert over St. Patrick's Day weekend raised more funds from the raffle baskets than the concert itself. That's extraordinary. Her St. Maria team also conducts food drives to help restock local food pantries as well as other service projects. And I know that this is some of her St. Vincent de Paul team here, by the way. So as I mentioned before, Teri's service to the Hatfield community extends beyond just the charitable work with St. Vincent de Paul Society. She also serves, as I mentioned, as the judge of elections for Ward four, one and four two, as an, well, I guess officially four, one. But quite frankly, we have these precincts, four, one, four, two, they're at the same location. Teri is in charge of Ward four. And no offense to the judge of elections for four, two, although, that is wonderful, but Teri is the go-to person. And, and that's over at Penfield Middle School. She claims this is a hereditary position, by the way. I've heard this story many times, because her family has been in the area and she has been in the area for many years. Family's been in the area since the 1950s. I know her mom served as the election clerk for many, many years, and we talk about that often. So Teri and her family moved to Hatfield in 1956, before that, before there was any public water or sewer system. So think about that commissioners for a second, right? We talk about these things and it was even before that. She has fond memories of the estate of the George S. Snyder, when it was still located on Market Street in the borough, and it says here to ask her about free chicks and rabbits that they used to hand out at Easter time. I didn't know that. Ice skating at All Box Pond and Memorial Day and Fire, and July 4th fireworks at the Hatfield Racetrack, for which she and her family had front row seats at their home on 40-foot road. So I cannot express enough how much our township owes to Teri and for the, again, the unrecognized efforts that she's put into not just St. Vincent de Paul, but also the judge of elections and so many other things. It is my great honor to have not only nominated her, but to award her with our Outstanding Woman for Ward Four. Congratulations. Thank you.
And my only comments are to introduce some of my St. Vincent de Paul people, Vicki and Donna, Joanne, Rosemary, Donald, Lorraine. Rosemary makes the most extraordinary gift baskets that you would ever want to see. And Vicki used to be our treasurer. Now she's working on a project that we refer to as OIN, which is ongoing income assistance, where we helped a family, a young single mother, with rental assistance for a year and coupled that with some educational programming, which took her out of, we hope permanently out of generational poverty and gave her the skills that she needed to move on to a more successful life for herself and her child.
I should have gone first. That's a tough act to follow. I think Tom's a natural lawyer. I mean, I'm speaker. Sandy, I'd like to put a clip up, please. And that's not to diminish what Sandy's done, it's really trying to match what Tom has So, you know, building, you know, a lot of what Sandy's accomplishments have been, has been associated with the Hatfield Aquatic Center. So I think the easy part was building it. It's the time it takes to keep it moving forward so that presents itself well to the next group of neighbors or residents who decide to become members of the pool. So if you ask Hatfield residents to list the township's greatest assets, it's a pretty good bet that many of them will place the Hatfield Aquatic Center at, or near the top of the list. Even people outside Hatfield recognize what a gem the pool is. The Hatfield Aquatic Center was named one of the top 10 municipal pools in Pennsylvania this past year. Many people who helped make the pool what it is, but as a member of the Township's Pool Advisory Board for the past 16 years, and now the board's chair, Sandy gets a good chunk of the credit for helping Hatfield Aquatic Center become one of the community's greatest treasures. When Sandy first became involved, the pool board essentially ran the pool. That's the old pool. It's, I'd sit and sign checks at our meetings, Sandy would say. In late 2000, there was a consensus that pool needed to be renovated. Hatfield town manager at the time, Stephanie Chioli, convened a meeting to throw out ideas. People would say, let's have a slide, or let's have a lazy river, and I think some of them were joking at the time at those suggestions. A lot of ideas seemed like pie in the sky. The township then held a public meeting and some of the same ideas and features were suggested. Still, no one seemed to think it would actually become to pass. Stephanie Chioli recorded the wish list and met with the pool developers. They came up with the design and remember, and Sandy remembers the first time they showed it to the pool board. Everyone in the room gasped, the design included most of the township's wishlist of features, two pools, three slides, a lazy river, splash park, hydrotherapy pool, and more. And I'll tell you, I was wanting the heated pool, because it was really chilly getting there in the spring, so I'm really, really heated pool got, got in there. Transforming the Hatfield Pool into the Aquatic Center was an investment that would require significant changes to how the pool was managed. The pool board became the pool advisory board, and ultimately responsibility of management of the pool and its finances now rested with the township. With some resistance, giving up controls, as is always hard thing to do, but Sandy knew it was the way to make, the way things to be, had to be done for the new aquatic center. Now, the pool advisory board sits down with the pool management at the end of every season to review results that, and what went well, what could be improved, what changes could be made. They've put together a budget for the following year, take into account how the pool did financially that season. And this was a real tough challenge with COVID. When COVID struck, the pool was hit pretty hard and getting folks back into the pool was a real challenge as well. They put together a budget the following year, take into account how the pool did financially that season, what improvements and repairs need to be made, and what items are on the board's wishlist. When the budget goes to the commissioners and once they vote on it, the budget is set for the following year. Then in January, the real challenge begins with Sandy and colleagues begin planning staff and programming. I think they had interviews tonight, actually, right? It's a long process, a lot bigger staff than what had been in the past. And so those suggestions given to the township and to the Hatfield Aquatic Center manager, John Taylor. Sandy's comfortable with the new structure. The pool advisory members have been on the board for a while and we have kids who grew up in the pool, up at the pool. She says, so we see that the pool from many different perspectives. We're advising on what we believe would be best to be sure that we satisfy the residents of the community. Another gratifying part of her being involved in the pool was been watching the growth and development of the staff, especially John Taylor, who started working at the pool as a lifeguard. And I remember when it was original, just a hole in the ground, John was there working as a lifeguard in high school and eventually becoming assistant manager prior to the renovation. After taking some time off, he had to marry and start a family, John came back and emerged at the top of the list when the township began searching for a manager for its sparkling new aquatic center. Sandy had a high comfort level with John. Sandy and John both worked and taught at the Central Bucks School District. Sandy was a science teacher for 40 years, and John taught woodshop. In fact, the rooms were across from each other. Sandy says she watched John grow up, so hiring John as a pool manager was like a full circle moment for us, for her, as he matured in his career as a dad. It was, it helped him become a good leader and that the pool is today. What does Sandy see when she looks at the pool now? Went the wrong way. Nope, right way. It depends when you go. If you go during the week, you mostly see Hatfield residents, a snapshot of our community. If you go on weekends, you see a larger slice of the community and the attraction the pool has for the surrounding communities. It's very much a multicultural hub, and that's a good thing. It's nice that we have, provide an opportunity like that for a lot of people at a reasonable cost. Some would take issue with the reasonable part, but Sandy has a real, a ready answer. Look what you get. You have an absolutely clean facility, kept up to date, two great pools, and you have a lot of attractions for the kids, Kitty Slide and Splash Park. And in fact, we just invested brand-new chairs last summer, so there's chairs as well when you come, and a great snack bar. The pool, she adds, is truly like a mini resort. Sandy has given her time to other places besides the pool. She helped out with the Hatfield Shark Swim Team when her kids were involved, and she currently volunteers at Mitzvah Circle and serves on the Board of Directors at the Penn State College of Alumni Education Society. But the work she has done for the pool will always be special for her. She said, I've always believed we have to give back to our community, and I thank you for that. Hatfield is a diverse community and I, and I like that. It's small enough where you can get involved and get to know people. There are lots of ways to get involved and, you know, like Lynn herself and everyone else who has been recognized tonight, giving back to the community is a big thing. So thank you very much, Sandy.
I'd first like to congratulate all the other women that are here tonight who received awards. It's really nice that our community recognizes the work that women do within the community. And next, I'd like to thank all the commissioners. You've always supported the pool, you've always supported me, and some of the harebrained ideas we've had and some of the needs we have going forward. So thank everyone so much.
One quick word. I just wanted to also invite Normieba to say a couple words. I'm sorry I didn't do it. I was so excited that I didn't realize to ask her to say a couple words. So if you could just hold on and then if everybody wants to go after, you're welcome to go or you're welcome to stay. It's up to you.
First up, forgot to say something, but just really thank you, Jen, Jennifer, for the recognition and for having this event to the commissioners. I am originally from New Jersey and I moved my young family down here, and it's been a beautiful experience living in Hatfields. The work I've done with Home and School has been amazing. Seeing the staff and the teachers and the students really love the work we're doing and enjoy the activities. It's been amazing. So I love being here and, you know, doing my part within the community. So thank you all.
Okay, so we know that that's the fun part that everyone showed up for. At 99.9% of you have no, well, maybe Ray Masser is, may stick around, but no, no one else is particularly excited about sticking around. You are invited to stick around if you like. You should not feel bad if you leave. Why don't we just take a quick moment or two so that if there is a large crowd that leaves, we'll, we'll give it a break. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations to all the recipients. Thank you, family and friends, for coming out and all the support that you've provided them over the years. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
How are you?
Yeah, you know what? You get up there, you just, you try to get through it, right? We're not all Toms.
I actually, I'm sung here.
About what?
I thought they got their HOP.
They did.
Yeah, what did? I haven't heard anything. I thought they'd be rushing or poor stuff.
Nice to meet you.
Maybe they're waiting on that, uh, other building.
This is a legend, by the way. So legends tell you.
He lets them go to construction.
For the public improvement.
I remember you a lot.
Who's hands?
Yeah, because he lets them go to construction. For the public improvements. Yeah.
Whose hands are colder?
That was just her.
Tom, you see, he's colder.
My mom is always, my mom is always.
They couldn't record because of the.
Whole hands warm heart.
Is that what it was?
Yeah. Remember, they didn't know what the other building was going to have. But the HOP part was messed up because.
Wait a minute. Your picture was in color.
To what was the other building, use that driveway as their construction.
The DEP with the building. They don't know who it is.
Well, but then we're going to have to make.
Yeah, we got to. Because we need some of that work.
Have a similar situation in both countries where they built it. Oh, Taco Bell. Just a weird coincidence. And there was a pad site right next to it, behind it, that they didn't know what they were.
I know. Even in the summer.
They had to have put something to lock it in because the plan was recorded. They pulled building.
They finalized it.
They finalized something, and they recorded the plans. So, yeah, I don't know.
Yes, I will. I will.
Like, the HOP is good.
Island.
At least if they're going to switch back.
Nice to meet you.
But at least it allows them to finish all proposed public improvements.
Nice to meet you.
Brian McAdam, nice to meet you.
Yeah. All the time. All the time.
Fucking lot of stuff by the, what will be the new building.
That's right. Good point. Why do I have to do that? I don't want to share it all.
Yeah, and you know what? Practically.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's legit. It just, I figured that out six months ago.
To not get done for six years.
Right, well.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Finish this, you're only going to get what you finished, and so I wouldn't be the least worried for the finagles.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt him.
I mean, we can bring him up under the dais.
He's got his head on a dais and hand on his ear. He's here a while. He's settling in.
Yeah, it was. It was a lock and solid issue.
So.
You guys trying to catch up?
I told you most work chiefs don't.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you. Nice meeting him.
The chief is good for lunch anytime.
Yeah, he is.
He just told me that.
Absolutely. Make him pay. John, make him pay for lunch, by the way.
I'm good seeing you.
All right, we're going to jump into our action items. We have a handful. So first is, it's bid results. Is there a motion to approve the bid results that are listed in your agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews. Second by Commissioner Lastrako. Sorry about that. See all the excitement, like you said.
I know, it's exciting.
So, any questions or comments with regard, oh, well, I guess I should hand this off there and to explain what it is.
Sure, Mr. President, I'll be quick because our guests waited through quite a presentation there to get to their items. So, good news all around. All bids came in under that we anticipated, under that we had budgeted, and actually for a lot of the items, under than what we had paid last year. So, good news. Good news all around for all of the items that we bid out in the spring of every year.
All right.
Just to comment, that's not by accident either. I think the staff does a great job getting those bids out early and getting that ball rolling started sooner than most.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great, thank you. All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the bid results listed in your agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Second, Resolution 24-08. Is there a motion for approval of the Curlot line change?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. This is something that we, the Cur representatives are here, that we discussed this at our last meeting. I don't know if there's any questions or comments. Brian, none? Okay. Any questions or comments from residents? All right, seeing none, then all in favor of Resolution 24-08, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Thank you for coming out. There was a bit of a wait for, you know, quick process, but, yeah, he definitely would have.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. All right, Resolution 24-09. Is there a motion for approval of the Sterling Walk Land Development?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lastrako. Questions or comments? Brian, do you have any additional comments to make?
Nothing really to add. I can say for this project as well as the previous one, the approval resolutions were sent out, and both were signed by the applicants in return. So, everything on staff's side is we're good to go.
Okay, that's good. Any questions? No? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 24-09, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Item number four, Resolution 24-10. Is there a motion for approval of the Sterling Walk Land Development Sewer Module?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. This is part and parcel of the last resolution that we just approved. Brian, anything related to this?
You know, this is common when a new project comes in for land development. Planning modules are required. Staff has looked at it and approved it, and we just need board concurrence and approval for it to move on.
All right. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I will call the question. All in favor of Resolution 24-10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Action, thank you. Action item number five, Resolution 24-11. Is there a motion for approval of the Police Pension Plan Updates Five-Year Smoothing Method Implementation?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lastrako. Aaron, this is something I know that you explained to us at our last meeting, something we've done in the past, maybe.
Happy to summarize again quickly. Items five and six are the same, making some modifications to our pension plan to modernize some of the assumptions, specifically the mortality tables being updated. Employees are living longer, healthier lives, which is great for our police officers and our non-uniform employees, but we need a pension plan that reflects those, the life expectancy. So, making those changes creates a much higher liability today. So, rather than absorbing all of those increases in one year, we're going to smooth out the increases over a five-year period, which allows us to do. So, all of our obligations are being met, our pension plans are funded, funded well, and our pension committee, Commissioner Ziffel and Rogers, do a great job of managing that. And this is just a tiny tweak to allow us to move forward without such a giant jump in obligation in one year.
All right. Any questions or comments related to that? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 24-11, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Last action item, number six, Resolution 24-12. Is there a motion for approval of the Non-Uniform Pension Plan Updates Five-Year Smoothing Method Implementation?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lastrako, second by Commissioner Andrews. That was part and parcel of our last summary, and so unless we have any questions or comments.
This won't comment. This only applies to those employees that are actually on the defined pension, correct?
Always remain for police pension.
Right.
On uniforms, this is all employees that were hired before 2013. Hired after 2013 is on a defined contribution.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 24-12, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, that is our action items. Any citizens' comments?
We do have, Mr. President, we do have two more items. I think I went a little short on my printing. There are two more items, only one we need to take action on. It's for a grant application. It's on the screen.
Oh, there it is. All right, I'll work from the screen. I was wondering, because I was wondering, we didn't have an adjournment at the end there, so I, okay. Thought we were saving a couple of bucks on the last page. All right, so we have two action items, and we're going to work off the big screen. Is there a motion for approval of Resolution 24-13? Motion for the Grant Application Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Aaron, why don't you walk us through this?
This is a grants opportunity that just came our way last week, so we're moving on. Citizens are well aware of the three homes the township is acquiring that have had repeated flooding over the years. Funding opportunity for the fourth home that did not qualify for FEMA funding, but this grant through the state, the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, allows for what they consider open space purchase, which is what this will be. The good news is the township, if awarded, will receive some funding to help offset the costs. The bad news is that it only funds half of the appraised land value, so it's not the value of the home itself. It's the land, which is, in this case, is only, process of getting it appraised, will be applying for 50% of whatever the value of that is. So it's not a significant amount of money, but any penny helps, I think, offset the cost.
Sure, no, absolutely. Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 24-13, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Last, but not least, unless we have a page four, I don't think we do. Resolution 24-14. Is there a motion for approval of the, to begin the 18-month maintenance period for 2618 North Broad Street Land Development?
Mr. President, before you take a motion here, we actually are going to table this for now. Our engineers still working out a few of the details with the applicant before we go into this maintenance period. Table it, we'll probably see it again next time.
Yeah, we anticipate, there was a couple of straggly field items that need to be taken care of. I fully expect that this will be on the agenda for the next regular meeting.
Okay, so no motion necessary, and we're going to move right to citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments of the three of you remaining?
John Coffey, 803 Gum Street in the township. I want to thank the commissioners and Aaron. Aaron and I have been working on, a friend of my 14-year-old son had a bicycle accident behind the Wawa. 11 o'clock at night with a dark, dark clothes, some guy hit him or he hit him going into Clement's Food. There's a stop sign on the left for cars. There's no stop sign on the right for the path. I don't think a 14-year-old kid would have stopped, but a 75-year-old man might really look at the sign. It's, I thought it was Tower Minson, Hatfield. I talked to Tower Minson Police, got a police report from Chief Tierney's office, and it turns out to be a moot point because Aaron tells me now that it's owned by Clement's Foods. It's private property. Because what I wanted to do, and what we knew with Aaron, is you've got the little stop signs here. That's all you need. It's not a big thing. But, might stop some 14-year-old kid someday running a stop sign or running across the road. And, thank you, Aaron.
That means we're doing something?
Clarify, yes, we're coordinating with Clement's Food Group. They purchased the stop signs. They'll be installing them hopefully in the next week.
Great.
Thank you.
John, thank you. Appreciate it. That's greatly appreciated. All right, any other citizens' comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thanks for coming out, folks.